Called a meeting to order. First item on the agenda is, agenda is approval of minutes. Consider approval of the May 7th special session, May 7th regular session, May 7th closed session, May 14th adjourned session, and May 14th closed session minutes.
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is a public hearing. Public hearing to consider the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 City of Albemarle budget. City manager presented this to us at the last meeting. I know there's been articles in the paper and on the radio about it. Tonight, we're here to hear any discussion concerning this. So this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Give us your name and address to start with.
My name is Lynn Honeycutt. I live at 2801 Silver's Lane, Albemarle. I've been a city resident, I'll say around 30 years. Y'all annexed us about 30 years ago. Been paying city taxes for about 30 years. I live out in the country, but that's beside the point. I caught it on the radio, I listen to the radio every morning when I'm shaving, about the five cent increase on taxes. I got no problem with that. I also heard that people that buy city power are getting a 4% reduction. I have no problem with that. My question to y'all is, from the day y'all annexed us, we've been on Duke Power. What are you gonna do for the people on Duke Power? And there's a lot of people on the northern end of the city limits that pays Duke Power bills, and it seems to me it's a little unfair. So what's gonna happen?
There is nothing going to happen, to be honest with you, because I'm in the same boat you are, you know where I live, and I'm the same boat. I have Duke Power also. Unfortunately, the law does not provide for us to do anything with Duke Power's rates. And city council does not have the authority to decide different houses by property rates. They have to choose it for the entire city. Unfortunately, I do not know of anything the city can legally do to change that for you.
Okay, for that, I assume y'all gonna vote yes on the budget as with the tax increase and the 4% discount on the city. Is that correct? Is that what's?
There will be different items. Tonight, the only thing on the agenda is the budget. The electric rates and water and sewer rates, all that stuff comes at a later time.
I've got a simple solution. If I pay the five cents, why can't everybody else pay it? If you didn't give 4% off on the electrical bill, everybody would be paying the five cent. I know that would tick a lot of people off, but if I'm gonna ride this city bus, I'd like to ride it with everybody else and not be thrown under it. And it seems like, y'all throw, I don't know how many people were annexed, but there's a lot of them up there, and it seems like we're getting thrown under the bus.
Well, actually, it's two different issues. Number one, the budget is for the property rate. The electric issue is to the customers that use city power. And I would tell you, I looked also, could we change us to city power up there? No. The only way that you can change to city power up there, Duke Power would release you as customers to the city, and that is a large area up there, and they're not about to do that.
I can understand that. People don't wanna lose business, but is it mandatory we give everybody else a discount except us? Is that mandatory?
It's two different issues. We're lowering our electric rates, yes, and that will be citywide, to anybody that's a customer of the City of Albemarle. And that will not be just in the city limits. We have a lot of customers outside of the city limits. They also will get the 4% discount.
And I think one of the things, Lynn, and I've spoken with Lynn about this, I mean, I spoke to him a week ago, probably. One of the things is, is that we have a couple of enterprise funds make it, in other words, they're funds where we sell, we produce and we sell with our water and our sewer and our landfill and that kind of thing. And the General Assembly has actually tightened our hands that if we have an abundance of money in one fund, we can't transfer it to the other. Okay? If we could, that would be great to be able to do, but we can't. So we, because we get our power through electricity through a co-op, they're giving us a discount, and what we're doing is seeing that we can then pass that down to our, to all of our folks that buy it from us. And, I mean, I've tried, I heard you the other night, and I've listened to you again, and I wish there was something we can do, but there's not.
Legally, there's just nothing we can do about that.
So you telling me y'all gonna throw us under the bus?
Well, I guess I'm throwing myself under the bus too, then.
But that's, I always try to do what? I've tried to live right, but you know, when you throw people under the bus, it's not right. And that's, that phrase has happened in the last eight years, kicking the can down the road and people thrown under the bus, but this is not right. I think everybody ought to pay it. This is a 15-year loan, am I correct on that? On the tax increase?
Help me out with the loan you're talking about.
On the five cent, the land y'all buying?
The five cent?
The increases to pay for that?
The five cent goes to pay the payments on the corporate center land and the police department building we repay.
Right, correct. Well, I talked to Mr. Ferris, and he said it would be a 15-year loan, so there's gonna be a five cent tax increase, which I assume there'll be more before it's over with, but that's for 15 years, is that correct?
And that will be council's decision at that time, which I'm sure none of us will be here. They will have the authority to lower those rates if they so choose, but it will be their decision. We can't make that decision for them. I couldn't say we're gonna raise it now and in 15 years lower it. We can't obligate another council to anything.
Well, I asked him about a sunset clause, did it end in 15 years? And he said, I can't tell you that.
But we can't do that to a council that's not yet appointed. They get to make their own decisions.
Just like every year, we look at the tax rate and determine, based on the county's evaluation of the property, what the rate's gonna be based on what the needs are, and that's how we come up with that rate. Are we in year two or three of an evaluation?
Second year.
This'll be second year.
Well, what would be the chances if you wrote Duke Power and asked them to release you?
I have no idea.
They would have to release the entire neighborhood.
What if you got everybody to sign a petition and send it to Duke Power? We'd love to have you. We would love to have you.
You've gotten my tax money.
They got mine too. They got mine too.
I pay taxes, taxes, and I don't mind paying taxes, and I would love to see the police get a new place. They need a place. But I just, I just feel like this is not right.
Have you been paying as much as city people paid for electricity?
I pay Duke Power, and mine's not cheap, I'll say that.
I've always heard that Duke Power customers got a lower rate than the city people.
Duke Power's rates right now are a little lower than ours, because we're still paying for the power plant.
So for all these years, you've been paying less than what people in the city have been paying for electricity?
But that, getting back to my reason to say, that doesn't get anything to drive the bus and get thrown under. I've wasted enough of my time. I appreciate your time, but I still think morally it's wrong to benefit part of the majority of the people in the City of Albemarle and not help the others.
I understand exactly what you're saying. This is legally, we have no recourse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against the budget?
I'm Jimmy Dunn. I live at 200 Holt Road, Albemarle, on the northern end. I've been there, living there since '78, and when I moved there, we wasn't in the city. Couple years I was there, we got annexed in the city. The street I live on wasn't fully stented all the way. Since then, there's been a pipe put in and stented. And I feel the same way with Brother Honeycutt. We need something out of it. I've not, I don't have a problem with the 5% raised, but residents in that area need something. We've got substandard roads, and that whole area, we need something out of it from the city. We've had no help from the city on our roads.
Holt Road was paved how many years ago?
It hasn't been paved since I've been there, since they finished it, first time.
Since they finished it?
Yeah. In fact, when I moved there, the payment stopped at my driveway, and there's gravel the rest of the way to the creek, and then you had to turn around at the creek and come back up the street. And now Prospect Road is closed, state closed it, and I'm getting all the traffic up my street. I sit there in my chair this morning, count 25 cars in 15 minutes running up that street. It's not only cars, it's 18-wheelers tearing the roads up, and the speed limit is 35 on that, that's a city street, speed limit's 35. I see people go 80, 90 mile an hour down there. I was sitting there one morning, and I seen a truck pass a school bus in the middle of my, in front of my house. And that road is not narrow, that's narrow enough for a school bus, must left two cars. I feel like we need to get something out of it. If we're gonna pay 5% more on the tax, we need something out of it.
Was your street part of what street that was slurry sealed this year? Wasn't part of Holt Surry Sealed?
Ross is saying no.
Was not? Was it the one beside out it, runs off the side? Okay.
That's my opinion. We need something out of it, residents in that area. They paid, Cloverfork Circle behind us over, but it's a substandard payment.
Okay.
Nobody likes it. So that's, that's, well, I feel about it. We need something out from the city for the residents in that area.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming forward.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak for or against the budget?
Move the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hald, close to public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Council, you have before you tonight a motion to pass the budget on first reading. You still have the option during those three weeks to reconsider and make any changes that you wish to make between now and the second reading. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval on first reading.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to pass the ordinance.
1822.
1822 on first reading.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We have no agenda adjustments, moving into announced delegations. We have the introduction of the new waste management personnel. Are they here? Okay, come forward, come forward.
Reason we didn't know them is none of them are the same. I mean, when y'all cleaned house, y'all cleaned house.
Well, truth be told, I've been around for about 10 years, but working with businesses, and now I have the opportunity to go with council. Yes. So to Mayor, Councilmember, thank you very much for letting us be here tonight. I'm Marilyn Wells, and I will have the privilege of working with Michael and Christina and several of you as needed. We sincerely appreciate the partnership with Albemarle. It's been a longstanding partnership, and I cannot express enough about how much we appreciate that partnership. So thank you all very much for letting us come here tonight to introduce ourselves. I'll let Jason introduce himself.
Hey, good evening. My name is Jason Hammond. I'm the senior district manager for waste management. My main responsibility is to oversee the collection operations for the Granite Quarry location, as well, which services the town, as well as the City of Charlotte. So, you know, it's a great opportunity to be here this evening. We appreciate the partnership, and we look forward to providing you with the best service that we can possibly provide for the near future.
And you new with waste management?
I am, yes, sir. I've been here about six weeks outside the industry, but many, many years of public service.
Okay.
So where are you located?
I'm located in Charlotte, in Gastonia, but I oversee both the Gastonia location, as well as the Granite Quarry location, which services this area.
And where are you located, Marilyn?
I'm based out of the Charlotte and Granite areas, so I go between both areas, which includes, of course, Albemarle. And we, as you all know, we have an office here in Albemarle, so I frequently go by that location.
All right.
And Curtis, do you want to introduce yourself? Yeah, come on now.
I'm Curtis Yakes, I'm the route manager for Granite Quarry.
And you live locally, or you live in Granite Quarry?
No, I live in Waxaw.
Waxaw, okay.
Yep.
While we have you here, I think Michael got a letter from you talking about rates the last week or so, and an issue that has come up. Will you explain that issue to us?
As I had told several individuals, and of course, Michael and Christina have probably heard this, as special as Albemarle is, unfortunately, we're not isolated. There abroad, 6% of the recyclables go over to China, and several of you all may be adept as to what's going on with commodities. You know, the definition of recycling means that someone wants to buy those commodities, the plastics, the cardboard, the aluminum, what have you. The good news is, the citizens of Albemarle are doing a really good job in recycling, and I think there's been a lot of engagement with, between the citizens and wanting to increase their recycling. Within the commodities, with what's going on abroad, it is affecting us here. And so what's happened is, with China reducing their contamination rate, and by contamination that means, if I had a Coca-Cola bottle...
Back to the, back to the microphone.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
It's bean taste.
And I walk, and I'll talk with my hands too. But back to commodities, when you have a Coca-Cola bottle that might be full in a particular recycling bin, and it pops open and gets the syrup and sugar over other materials, that contaminates those other materials. And China has reduced their contamination rate to now 0.5%, which essentially means next to no contamination. So as things are being recycled, less is able to, be able to be sold abroad, which is affecting what is here within the states. And it's, frankly, it's not even just a waste management issue, it's a recycling and commodity issue.
Do you have a plan to try to let the residents know how to avoid contamination?
Yeah, we actually do. In fact, we'll be working with, with Michael and Christina, but we actually have different materials that we can, you know, send out and include. You know, sometimes it's about education, frankly, which is, I think, what you're speaking to, is so as far as education, educating the residents on what is acceptable or not acceptable. I know we have the stickers that we put on the containers that basically will say what types of materials can go in there, which is helping. We've seen, you know, as it's been adopted, we've seen less and less contamination, which is wonderful. So I think residents are starting to learn, but as we know, sometimes those things take just a little bit to catch on.
Under your current contract with us, what clause are you citing to make this change?
As far as with the recycling? Basically, we have within the City of Albemarle as far as a straight pass, and this is just a straight pass clause. To be honest with you, I didn't bring a copy of the contract with me, so I'll have to look and see where that is, but it's a straight pass. As far as, you know, disposal, I think there's some clause in there for, if rates go up within the disposal site, that we might be able to...
I don't see any of that in our contract, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, and we'll look. We'll definitely...
Is that in my contract, you're saying?
Well, we've got a couple areas that could possibly be it, and you may not have seen it, Marilyn, so I apologize, but I'd sent an email with that particular question, just saying, you know, we need to know specifically what clause is being enacted, if it's something automatic, something has to be negotiated.
Absolutely. And so I will get back with you.
It's fairly unusual.
Full disclosure, I drove in from my niece's graduation last night in Tennessee, so literally came straight here, so I have not seen that email.
And I think time is of essence.
I totally agree.
Because this has an impact, an impact on this budget.
Would you explain your method of operation, how you got rid of it before, and what you're planning to go to?
Sure, sure. So we were taking the materials to Sunoco and Salisbury. Sunoco then was transporting the materials to a company called Recommunity that's down in Charlotte, and they were processing the recyclables. Recommunity is no longer accepting materials outside of the area. And so Sunoco and Salisbury essentially said, we can no longer accept the recycling materials. So what we have had to do, thankfully, is we have an entire bay at East Spencer Transfer that is dedicated to recycling. We brought in trailers, and we are literally transporting, because no regional recyclers in this vicinity are wanting to accept the materials, quite frankly, it's because of what's going on abroad. So they don't want those materials, so we're having to transport those to a recycling facility in Winston-Salem.
Were you doing a transfer before, or having the trucks go directly to Sunoco?
We were having trucks go directly to Sunoco and Salisbury.
Just for these folks and folks that are watching, what other cities that you all are responsible for, okay, have the same type of recycling and waste, waste pickup like we do? Just that are about our size? Other than Charlotte?
Yeah, we, obviously, we currently service, obviously, Charlotte. We also pick up recycling for not just Albemarle, but Salisbury, Locust, Red Cross, Richfield, Stanfield, Kannapolis, yeah. So there's several communities that we currently are picking up the recycling.
And their recycling is being done the same way through Spencer?
We're having to take, so of the, of the ones that we were taking to Sunoco and Salisbury, and we had that arrangement, unfortunately, when Sunoco and Salisbury was unable to accept those materials any longer, we had to find an alternate arrangement, which obviously involved having to transport it to a greater distance.
When you do a collection day in Albemarle, does it take multiple transfer trips, or one trip to take it to Winston-Salem?
How many trucks?
Multiple trips. It's multiple trips.
Because we will take the, straight from the truck to the transfer, and then we'll have to load onto a trailer and then transport it up to Winston. So the good news is, it's still being recycled. We just had to find, unfortunately, an alternate method to do so.
What's the odds that this new location gets overwhelmed, and they say no more to, where you're taking it now?
To be truthful with you, I think we've got accommodations to be able to handle the material that we know we're taking in up to that location, and they had, they had more room, so to speak, and more availability to be able to take that material.
Counsel, any further questions?
So if folks in our community need to contact someone from waste management, will there be somebody physically in this office to call, or how will that be?
Yeah, the local, our contract states that somebody, the waste manager has to keep a local office.
Yeah, we have some in the Albemarle location. There will be somebody there, okay.
That is the case, and we'll continue to do that.
That won't change. That's correct. Just want to make sure for people who are listening, thinking... Absolutely. We still will have that location. Y'all are outside, right? Okay, that's good.
You've had a lot of issues with timely pickups. Do you think you've gotten that behind you and more on schedule now? That might be for you, Curtis.
I'll let, I'll let them answer that, but to be, but, but my understanding is, is that, yes, I do feel that we are doing a much better job with that. I know that there were some issues last summer that had occurred, so I feel like we've, we've fine tuned to be able to handle that much better now. But I'll let Curtis handle that.
Yeah, no, we've actually added more resources, more routes on the street, improved our fleets, newer trucks, state-of-the-art Corrado trucks now is something that we're using, that is a newer technology that allows us to do more bulk pickups. So those things that we've added over the course of the last probably three to six months have certainly impacted the service for, in a positive manner. And we'll continue to reinvest in technology, vehicles, personnel, training, everything of that nature to continue to provide good service.
Follow-up?
Sure.
Curtis, how long have you been with the company?
I've been with the company six months now.
Six months?
Yes.
So one of my constituents said, why is it that on, I can't, I guess it's on recycle day, we have, on one street, okay, we have two trucks come on one day on one street, one that comes and does one side, and one that comes down and does another side? Is that correct on everywhere?
No, that's not correct everywhere. What we did, we split the route, and we have a capacity of a truck, so we know it, so many homes that that truck's gonna take care of. So if your house is on, you can be on one side of the street or the other, that truck's gonna take care of it.
Okay, 'cause on my street, and one of my neighbors said, why isn't we have two waste, why isn't we have two recycling trucks that come down here about the same time? And I'm saying, I don't know, but I all found out.
It could be just an isolated incident.
There could have been a driver call out where we had to...
It's regular.
Is it regular?
Yeah. Kmart or every, yeah, every other week.
But you are timed. As Curtis said, it might be participating, it might be capacity.
Obviously, you're timely, though.
Very much so.
Yeah, so if they're competing, that's, that's pretty good.
Very timely.
Mr. Aldridge?
As far as your, as far as your personnel, are you fully staffed now? Because I know one of the, one of the areas that we had some hiccups on, it wasn't necessarily about the equipment, or about the trucks, or about anything, it was about, you had people calling out, and you had let some people go, or they had chose to leave, but is, from, from the City of Albemarle's perspective, is waste management currently staffed properly?
Yes, sir, we are. You know, we put a conscious effort in our employee retention over the course of the last few months. Like I said, increased number of routes, technology, investing in our people. You know, Curtis has been there six months. Larry Becker, though, is the site manager, who's been there 12 to 13 years, so you got someone that's very seasoned, that's running that location, that reports to me, and, you know, I think that we certainly have the ample amount of people now, and it's just a continued education, continued training, that we gotta make sure that, as a leadership group, that, you know, we're investing in our people.
Of the total people that cover the Albemarle area, approximately what percentage is local people?
I'm not quite sure.
We have two drivers that are from Red Cross. I have actually three that are in the Albemarle area, that live directly in Albemarle.
Further questions, Counsel?
Just a follow-up before you leave. In the past, I know that your predecessors, each of your predecessors, we, maybe not individually, but council-wide through our manager or our clerk, could get with you at any time needed. If you all don't mind, before you leave, if you, you've already gotten them. Well, you're ahead of me then, that's good. I just want to make sure, because with new faces, you know, we don't know, we didn't know who you were.
That's why we're appreciative to be able to be here, so thank y'all very much, and Paula does have that information.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Also, under announced delegations, number four, Mr. Adam Johnson, Unique Auto Source, to present concerns over bee droppings on his car inventory. Mr. Johnson, we had this on the agenda last time, and unfortunately, you was not able to attend. Counsel did have some discussions, so go ahead with your presentation.
Yes, and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity, and again, my apologies for, that was my mistake on the last council meeting, but it is important to us, and we didn't want to at least have the opportunity to present this to you, seek your guidance, and hopefully some type of remedy. We're at 465 West Main Street. We also have with us the owners of Stanley Motors, which is right up the street from us on the corner. Our concern is that for the past, at least a little over two and a half years, we started noticing some droppings on the car, which at that time, we really didn't know what they were, but we thought it was some really strong pollen. So we kinda kept washing and washing, and it actually takes longer than just a regular wash. You have to go by it with your fingers, or something more kinda strong to actually get the droppings off the car. What we realized after doing some research is the droppings were from bees, and there's a beehive, sort of, I guess, the owner, or I'm not sure what exactly he's doing, but has several beehives directly behind our businesses. And as I understand it through doing some extra research, the flight path that the bees take go directly over both of our car dealerships. And the end result is that the droppings come from the sky, land on the cars, and what happens is, they dry, and if you don't get to them and wash them every day, and actually, what brought this more to light was earlier on in May, when we had the higher temperatures, it can actually get to a point of a crust, sort of on the paint, and it actually rubs through and affects the clear coat of the paint. So a few of our cars, especially darker cars, we've had to have professionally buffed, because it's actually gone through the clear coat of the paint at a cost of $125 per car. So I did some additional research, I brought some pictures for you to see, kind of a before and after, of a Cadillac Escalade that we have on our lot, to show you that even of doing a thorough car wash, the droppings are still on the car, and you have to go back... are still on the car, and you have to go back and do extra and do extra to try to keep them clean. So what we're looking for, and the only thing that I could do through looking at city ordinances was, and it certainly would be a stretch, but 81.01.1 is something that may be possible. It's defecating on private property, being prohibited within city limits. Not sure if that would really apply, but I thought I would at least bring it forward to the council members, just to see what could be done, offer us some guidance on what we can do.
I'm not sure there is anything you can do. You're talking about Mother Nature, so I don't know that you can do anything. And I will tell you, at our discussion last week...
Yes, sir.
Many of the municipalities are now looking at becoming what's called a bee city.
Yeah.
And so council has discussed looking at that also. The closest one to us right now is Davidson. But I do not know that we have any answer for any, of how to stop the bees from doing this.
So is it, is, I guess it is permissible in city limits to have the beehives?
It is.
So, I mean, in that case, if it's our cars as well as another, where it impacts our business or our operation, and that we have to expend extra dollars to keep them clean and to buff them and do more because of that, is that, if that one business affects another, is that something that can be looked at or no?
We can research it, but I honestly do not know of anything. And I've, we've talked to some of the staff, and the staff will look into it. But I'll be honest with you, I don't think there's anything you can do about, this is Mother Nature. I mean, be honest, it's Mother Nature. Now, I didn't, that's not to tell you that you don't have some legal recourse against somebody else.
Right, sure.
But it's, I don't think the city has any recourse, but we will investigate it to make sure.
Okay.
Have you found any other cities that have this?
You know, there actually, and I can, one of the things that I found, there was actually a case in 1982 or 1984, and of course, you're speaking of the legal remedy, where they had to sue the beekeeper because it was causing damage to their property. And they, they were successful, the car dealership was successful in that endeavor. To, to answer your question about other cities where there are bees, and yeah, I mean, I can provide this for the council members at your pleasure, so you could take a look at it. And of course, we invite you to, and I'm sure Stanley Motors, if you want to take a look, just to see what we're talking about. Yeah, there are places in, in city and municipalities that do provide this kind of place for agricultural endeavors also. I think that the, the concern on our end, as well as with Stanley Motors, is that while we respect their right to operate their business, it's impacting our business as well. And we want to work together, and we're certainly happy to have as, as much business as downtown can sustain. We just want to have the same rights protected for our property.
Are there photos around with Mr. Bramlett so we can see?
I'm sure this is not the only place this has happened in. I just wondered if there wasn't some technological solution to it.
Staff will have to investigate that. I cannot answer that for you.
And just FYI, particularly for you all...
Yes, ma'am.
Since it was on the agenda two, two weeks ago.
Yes, ma'am.
The beekeeper was here two weeks ago.
Yes, ma'am.
And he said to us then, I think in, in public, or maybe to us and, so I knew it, heard it, that he was about to be into the big busy season. So he basically was here two weeks ago, but said he probably would not be back tonight because of that, because he was out doing whatever he does.
And I think actually, we, we noticed the uptick. So when there are more, either he brings in more hives and more bees, we certainly see the result, because the, the droppings escalate, from what's the better way to say it. And, um, we can actually wash a car and actually get most of the droppings off the car, and within an hour, an hour and a half, they're right back. So, and this maybe seems a little bit strange or far-fetched, it's just something that, at this point, is impacting not only our business, but also Stanley Motors. So we were just trying to seek some guidance and hopefully some relief from council members.
And mayor, I do know that there has, that city staff has done some work with that already.
Yes, ma'am.
About how far is the property owner of the, of the beekeeper from your business?
60 yards.
Yeah, it's so close. It's really not, it's, if you look at like Harris Street, I guess, it's in between Harris and Depot. Yes, sir.
Right behind, in the slate building.
Yes, sir.
I, I think we all have empathy...
Yes, sir.
For what you're going through. And bees are a very important source of what keep us on this earth.
Yes, sir.
And short, uh, even if they live, bees are all over the place right now.
Sure.
And they are in my yard, and I'm sure everybody else's yard, and I'm sure my cars probably have that, and I didn't know what it was.
Exactly, yeah.
I've been down to Ron and Keith's lot...
Yes, sir.
About six, eight months ago to look, but, um, I think the mayor is right that we can take a look at it, and that's doing our due diligence.
Yeah, and then, at this point, that's what we're asking for.
And to see what we can do. And, um, I just appreciate the, the harmony that's going on between y'all, and that's important.
Yes, sir.
And I think if we can keep that up, that, you know, Mother Nature has a way of taking care of things.
Absolutely.
We surely don't want to make her mad.
I understand.
What, what are the things? I've learned something from this. I've learned what those little brown spots are on my car.
Well, at least I can provide some, yeah, we can provide that.
Good job of it. But I keep, I keep worrying about this over and over.
Yes, sir.
How would it look if we passed an ordinance that you can't have beehives?
Oh, yeah, understood.
I just, it just worries me to think about how we would look to the world.
Sure, right.
If we did that, and it's very, it's very frustrating, as it is to you.
Yeah.
And I just don't know what, what options there are for us.
And I don't know, you know, and it may be, and I don't know the beekeeper personally, and I don't know that he would be willing to relocate to somewhere a little bit off the beaten path. The unfortunate thing is that the flight path that those bees take, and I don't know what impacts their flight path of where they go, they travel directly over our car lots. It's the strangest thing.
Have you examined, have you examined any, any electronic devices that might, that you might mount in your one lot there that might be a deterrent?
I, I don't know what I'm talking about.
Sure, I know, yeah. Like an insect repellent, something.
Is there some little sound device or something that might, that might chew them away?
Yeah, well, we're gonna try anything.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll look at that.
Might be worth a conversation with the Stanley County Beekeepers Association. They might know of something that we don't know of, you know.
Okay.
So we're talking.
I didn't even know that there was such a thing, so that's, that's good to know.
Kevin Robinson might know of something.
I have not gotten in touch with them yet, but I'll, I'll do so. All the ordinances that we've seen so far are primarily residential-based. And you can actually put up a six-foot, six to seven-foot wood fence right behind where they're at, and you can keep them from going directly onto the neighbor's property over there. Eventually, they're gonna go, they're gonna go further away, and we're looking at about 180 degrees of car lots that we've got down there when they leave that hive and everything. So I don't know what exactly we would do, but we can call and talk to them about that and find out.
I think, I think also reaching out to other municipalities, because we can't be the only one in this situation. So we definitely don't want to hurt the, the business owners, any of them, and I know that's definitely got to be a nuisance and a, you know, a lot of work, a lot of extra work for you all.
And reach out to Davidson, Kevin, if you would, and see what they did in their bee city. Maybe they adopted something that would help us in that. Thank you.
I appreciate you all. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We have no unannounced allegations. Administrative reports, your monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. Number six, consider a proposed timeline for repairs to 608 Summit Avenue. At the last meeting, counsel, we talked about asking Mr. Rory to come before us. I think he has a representative here, but he is not here. If he would come forward.
How you guys doing? I'm Michael Townsend. I'm here to represent Mr. Rory. Uh, I want to follow up. He called me today. I think you guys sent him a letter out two weeks ago. One of the problems is, I, I don't know if it comes to, I didn't, I think I talked to you guys.
You did.
If his mail comes to an address here, one of the things I would like to suggest, and I told him today, I don't know if you guys sent him the mail or the city, or tax office, or whoever, but to send the mail directly to him in Maryland.
He needs to have his addresses changed at the tax office then to, for that to happen.
Okay.
And he needs to be the one that does that. We can't just do that.
Okay, I, I'm just saying, like I said, I suggested to him today that he does that, because I think he got, you guys sent the letters out two weeks ago. He just got it a couple of days ago or something. Um, I understand that you guys wanted him here personally. Um, he couldn't do that, but I'm here, so.
One of the reasons we asked for him to be here, council just in the last week ago has authorized our staff to start looking at foreclosures for houses that have not paid taxes for some considerable time. And he has not paid taxes on this one for a pretty good time. And one of the things we're looking at, we hate to see you put a lot of money into this house and then us foreclose on it because the taxes have not been paid. We were asking that he pay his taxes before he starts on all the money he wants to put into that house.
He made me aware of that today. He spoke with someone, I'm not certain of the contact person that he spoke with at the tax office today.
Yeah, I'm pleased.
But I think he did, his daughter did as well. I wasn't able to contact either one of those before I came, but he meant, I'm not certain of who the contact person was, but he did contact the tax office.
He talked to Kevin in the planning office. I don't know if he talked to the county tax office or not, but he did talk to Kevin in our planning office.
I think he talked to two people. He did mention that he spoke with Kevin, and I'm not certain of the other person, but...
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
I, I looked at that material, and two things struck me. Everybody in the world knows that you have to pay property taxes. And, and was I correct in, in what I saw, that there must have been 12 or so years straight that no property tax had been paid on that?
2007.
Is that correct?
You only have 10, you only have 10 years of records on that, so it's 10 years currently. I cannot tell you how many were written off before that, but you, you only keep 10 years on, on the books.
Okay, but there are 11 years, and everybody knows you have to pay property tax. Number two, the thing that struck me, I went over and looked at that house. You'd have to be a miracle worker to cover that. I, I'm not sure anybody could cover that house.
Yeah, I've seen worse.
Counsel, you have Mr. Rory's proposal in front of you. Any, any questions?
One, six months.
Then you spoke with him, didn't you?
I did.
Okay.
I did speak with Bobby and talk to him about the things that were, that I thought were necessary to do. And I'm, I'm not a proponent of dressing up the outside and to hide the inside. Nobody lives on the outside of the house.
Right.
And as this property tax issue began to, to grow and grow and grow, and there, and there may be other residences that Bobby, Mr. Rory owns that are also in default to councilperson. Bramlett, come January of every year, you've got five days. I don't care whether you can read, write, deaf, dumb, you know it, and you gotta pay it. If you don't pay it, you gotta know that you didn't. And I've got a problem with that. We all have a responsibility to do what we're required to do to help move our air, our city forward. We can't have everybody just, for whatever reason, deciding I'm gonna forget for the last 10 years to pay my property taxes. And you want, and I'm a little bit appalled to, to even entertain the notion, will you help? You know, help yourself and then you can get help. But probably before I do anything else, would say anything else, pay the property taxes.
I think that's his intention.
All right, let's see it.
Okay.
Having to call.
As I said before, I, I'm, I'm the middleman.
I understand.
My understanding was he had a talk with someone today, Kevin and someone else, about this tax issue, and hopefully they can resolve it.
Counsel, what's your wishes? If I'm hearing Mr. Dry, I think he wants to see the taxes paid before we give him the time period to fix the house without us tearing it down. Is that what I'm hearing?
The implication is if he does pay taxes, then we're okay to give him that thing. I'm not sure I want to do that.
No, that's not it at all. We, we have the choice as to whether to look at that timeline and make it applicable.
Actually, I would have started on some of that, but the, the thing was to hold off because I think the last meeting, your cast came up with the tax issue, and so I just say, no, we didn't start something that we won't be able to finish, so.
Maybe he...
I say, I'm, I'm prepared to start whenever, you know, you guys give him the okay or whatever, but until then...
Mr. Robinson, what did Mr. Rory indicate to you today?
Yeah. I'm sorry, what's that?
What did Mr. Rory indicate via y'all phone conversation?
Uh, he said he would look into paying the taxes. Um, we didn't get, I think, he said he wasn't gonna be able to do it today, but I didn't get anything else from him.
That's what y'all had discussions about.
That's really, yeah, I mean, he basically said he wouldn't be able to be here, he would look into paying them. That's what I got.
And do we know by chance the total that's owed currently in taxes?
Um, I, I didn't do any search on details on those.
Can't open it up.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you can actually look at those or not.
The county tax office would have to give us that.
Um, you could probably look up the, you can actually, I think you can see what the taxes are for the property value there, reduce it, but going, but going back 10 years, I wouldn't have any idea.
Counsel, what's your wishes?
I think personally, we are looking at that issue of if you've not paid your property tax after a certain number of years. I mean, the house, not necessarily just in this one, but some houses and properties are probably not worth what 10 years of taxes would be. Okay? That's, you gotta think about that. And I think, Ben, when you made the comment that everybody knows they've got to pay that property tax, I commend my folk, Kevin and other folks here about showing us that, I mean, this was 10 years. And like someone said, we may have already given him a couple of years, given it to him.
I, I'm just curious, based on, based on the numbers, 10 years and the tax, tax basic, that property alone, what are we talking, $300 a year maybe for 10 years, $3,000, something like that?
I can't, I can't begin to say that. I don't know.
I want to, I was trying to get a ballpark figure.
I have no idea.
I mean, then that you said after 10 years you wouldn't pay, I'm just, that's not really a considerable amount of money, but...
Very, I'm glad you said that. I'm just, now you need to tell Mr. Rory that that's not a considerable amount of money in the pay.
In comparison to a property, as she was saying, was it worth, you know, the 10-year plus the, the value of it?
Your honor, back to your comment. What do we want to do?
I'm just saying that.
I'm of the opinion that they pay their taxes before we give them an opportunity to move forward. And once the tax is paid, we can go back and look and, and relook at this proposed timeline. Because if we continue to drag it out and drag it out and drag it out, that's exactly what's gonna happen. We've allowed this one to go long enough, okay? We have allowed it to go long enough.
Mr. Bramlett?
Not following up, but along the same line, there's a far, far bigger issue for us, the city council, sitting here. And that's a principle that's being used in all sorts of court cases today for the first time, and that is uneven application of the law. We have an ordinance that we have not, that, that we have not fully enforced. We have allowed it to go long enough.
Mr. Bramlett?
Not following up, but along the same line, there's a far, far bigger issue for us, the city council sitting here. And that's a principle that's being used in all sorts of court cases today for the first time, and that is uneven application of the law. We have an ordinance that we have not, that, that we have not fully enforced. How do we then, the next person who doesn't pay taxes, how can we then say, you've got to pay even though this man who went 10 years without paying, didn't pay? How do we, how do we look at ourselves in a mirror and say, it's okay for you to go 10 years without paying, but it's not okay for this guy to go 10 years without paying? It's called uneven application of the law. And it is being successfully used to, to get people out of things. I, I don't know how we can possibly excuse this, and that's what we'd be doing. And at the same time, enforce it in other cases. I just don't, I just don't see it.
Well, to, to the point of the gentleman, the point the gentleman made just a few minutes ago about the amount, it's not really amount, in my mind, it's not the amount of money, it's the principle. I mean, if it's only $300 or six, or how much ever, then why in the world wouldn't the land, why wouldn't the gentleman have paid it all along?
Well, no, my point wasn't that, it was just that, you know, she said over a 10 year period, that the house probably wasn't worth what the tax payoff would be. That was my understanding, what Ms. Hall was saying. And I was saying that the house is definitely worth more than $3,000 if that's what you're comparing it to. I mean, I'm not justifying him not paying his taxes. That's not my part here at all. I pay mine, but I'm just saying. Based on what she stated, I was just, you know, that's not a fair assessment, I don't think, to say that the house not worth the tax value at this point. I don't know what the tax value is, but I would assume it's somewhere around that amount at $300 a year for 10 years. I'm just assuming. Based on the tax base.
I don't think Mr. Townsend is in a position tonight to adequately speak for Mr. Rory. You know, it's, it's up to council whether or not we're gonna give him any time on the ordinance and or the taxes, you know? And I think we need to proceed from there, you know? Um, I think we putting him somewhat in a awkward, awkward position.
I think so too.
Yeah. Well, I was just, but again, Ms. Hall, I just think the house is worth keeping if that's where we at about the money issue. Um, if Bobby can pay it, which I'm hoping he can't.
If he can't.
I would want to see the house destroy about $3,000. That's what my point here is.
If he can't pay the taxes, how's he gonna pay 20, 30, $40,000?
That's, we can't make it.
Listen, again, I don't know what he's capable of doing. A lot of that, again, work on the 20,000 end, I can help him there with just a little backbone. We, we'll work that out, but.
Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Taxes paid.
I love you. Taxes paid.
I'm hearing varying opinions, so I need a motion of some kind.
I move that we don't move forward on this case until all of the taxes for the whole entire 10 years are paid. And at that time, then we will look at that time at a proposed timeline.
Are you gonna give a deadline for the taxes?
Somebody else can add that and that will be a friendly amendment.
But you do need to, you do need to put a deadline on it because we've only, we've only given him so much time to do something or we need to proceed with our condemnation.
By June the 30th.
June 30th.
By June 30th.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hall that by June 30th, the taxes be paid and then we will reconsider allowing him to re, repair the house rather than it being condemned and destroyed.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion?
I, I don't want any implication that we will approve anything even if that's done.
It just says we will look at it.
We will look at it. It does not say approve the proposed.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
You partially won.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes, sir.
I do want to bring it to your attention that there are several more houses in this condition that will be coming before council in the next year on the condemnation list. He may want to concentrate more on some of those than this one. It's totally up to him, but he has multiple houses that will be, see, next year, we'll be talking about the same thing again.
I hear you, Mr. Mason.
So I want to give him a chance to, to do something with them before we have to condemn them and tear them down.
Well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business proclamation, National Public Works Week. Counsel, in your agenda, you have a proclamation.
Move we approve the proclamation.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve the proclamation, the National Public Works Week, May 20th through 26th.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge.
And I'm proud that they're all here. Thank you for being here.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Hall, would you read the proclamation?
Now that I can bring it back up, yes, cause I was looking at the GIS tax to find out how much the last one was worth. Proclamation, National Public Works Week, May 20th through 26th, 2018. Whereas the City of Albemarle Public Works Department provides services that are an integral part of our citizens' daily lives and are critical in addressing the needs of our growing community. And whereas employees of Albemarle's Public Works Department provides a wide range of services such as roadway maintenance, sidewalk and storm drain maintenance, downtown beautification, fleet maintenance, warehousing, and solid waste collection and disposal services. And whereas public works employees response, response to emergencies and disasters is recognized as an absolute necessity and therefore are acknowledged as first responders. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and operations could not be provided without all of the dedicated, loyal, and hardworking public works employees. And whereas because of the skilled and loyal employees of the Public Works Department of the City of Albemarle is safer and more aesthetically pleasing and the services they perform are a vital part of the economic well-being of our community. And whereas the 2018 National Public Works Week theme is quote, "The Power of Public Works," unquote. And this theme showcases the importance of public works and how the community depends on the men and women of this profession. And now therefore the City Council of Albemarle, North Carolina does hereby officially proclaim the week of May 20th through 26th, 2018 as National Public Works Week in the City of Albemarle, North Carolina, and call upon all citizens and organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing public services and to recognize the contributions which public works employees make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Proclaim this the 21st day of May, 2018.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aren't you gonna get a picture?
Thank you very much.
Oh, they need a picture.
Everybody in the orange shirt is a picture.
We need a picture, a group shot.
Gotta get it out.
Thank you very much for all you do. We appreciate you all being here. Ross, does EU or any of your staff want to say anything?
Not a chance. I just want to thank the staff. Well, you know, we, as you all know, we've gone through some transition. Uh, we've had a lot of retirees and we've had some turnover, but they're pulling through and they're hanging in there and, and we're still getting the job done. And so I, I do want to applaud the staff and I thank them. Fleet maintenance, we're, we're coming together now. Full staff starting tomorrow, street division still plugging along and of course, landfill we've got good staff.
Bring them all up and let's get a picture, please.
I know. We all need to.
Clemson.
Are they doing? For the press.
Robert, you ready to take a picture?
Shannon can get one too. Shannon get one.
Turn around and face them.
And hold up your, hold up the bucket.
Don't everybody get in the back.
Shannon, you lining them up.
Shannon, you lining them up.
Well, high behind there.
I'm hiding.
Put this out on Facebook with their picture of the City of Albemarle.
Robert, send them, send them the pictures before we're out of here.
Okay.
Gentlemen and ladies, thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Paul.
Text me your number.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Is that the new guy from the radio?
Yeah, Dave.
Okay, that's him.
Well, it's just due to us. Number eight, consider cost proposal from Raftellus, I hope is the way you pronounce that, Financial Consultants for Water and Sewer Financial Planning and the Cost of Service Rate Study. Mr. Leonis is here, if you have any questions. We've talked about this for a few months. He's gone through the request for qualifications and this is the proposal staff is bringing to us to use. Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Leonis? How long do you anticipate this study taking?
Two to three months, when I last I talked with them.
And so that the public out here and on the television understands in a, an elevator speech, in other words, three minutes or less, why are we doing this?
I hope it won't take three minutes. Basically, as, as we're all aware, our water and sewer rates, while we're in the 10 percentile and all of the metrics that you look at across the state, we have not had a good financial, a good look at them, not only from a financial standpoint, but also from a structure standpoint in terms of the classes of customers, customers we have, where our water sales are at, kind of a holistic look at the rates. And so that's basically what this study will be doing, is not only looking what our financial needs are, but the structure is how we go collecting the revenues needed to support those needs.
I've, I've struggled with this.
Yes, sir.
I'll look at $59,000 and, and the question keeps going through my mind, so we find out we're, our rates are low, are we just gonna raise them because we're low? Or if they are high, are we going to reduce them just because they're high? I'd like to think that we base our rates on what it costs us to produce the product and then add a reasonable amount to that. And I, I just have trouble thinking in terms of $60,000, which to me is a heck of a lot of money to determine that.
Well, first off, let me, let me address first the, the 60,000. It is on a time and material basis. It's not a lump sum cost. Secondly, you are absolutely correct. We're, we're, there is a lot of data for us to analyze, not only from, well, let me start first. There will be a financial planning. Now, they will take our capital improvement plan and they will look at the staging of that and how that will move forward. They will also take a look at how much it does cost us, what our operational costs are. They will also, and take that together and look at what our future needs are over a five to 10-year horizon. And then they'll, at the same time, after they kind of complete that, they'll go back and look at our rate structure that we have and where our volumes of sales, where the cost of service really is, whether it's with our residential customers, whether with, with our industrial customers or our wholesale customers. One of the things we want to try to do is make sure there's an equality there in terms of who's paying for what, based on what they, based on the consumption. So you are absolutely correct. We're not gonna just be raising the rates arbitrarily. There is going to be a methodology behind that. Does that answer your question, sir, or give you a little bit more ease? I, I know that one of the things, it was a large amount of money and working with Raftellus to try to, to provide, try to get that down, cause we really didn't have that, that much money budgeted for, but we were able to pull our nickels and quarters together to make it work.
Also, we've not had one done.
I mean. No.
So we have nothing to even go back and.
That is one of the issues that there was really, there's really been nothing of a comprehensive, of this kind of comprehensive nature.
And if I recall, that's one of the things the, the committee and the legislature is actually looking at when, when you've had a rate study?
LGC is actually looking, I, I think that's one of the things they recommended to us or strongly recommended, but there's also been, um, there's actually a committee within the legislature that is producing a study with respect to how rates are set, uh, water and sewer rates are set across the state.
Two, two points to follow up. So number one, the dashboard would show though, that we are well, that we, that we do real well by our, by our folks who buy water from us.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
They get a good rate, number one. Number two, the 59.8 or 60 or whatever it is, 59.8 is coming straight out of your money.
Yes, ma'am.
It's not out of general fund, it's not out anything.
Comes out of the enterprise fund.
It comes straight out of the sale of water.
Yes, ma'am. As the.
So that folks will know that.
Enterprise funds, as you've said, we have to make sure we can only really spend those on.
Those things.
On those things.
Further questions? If you're in agreement, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to engage Raftellus Financial Consultants for the Water and Sewer Financial Planning and Cost Service Rate Study.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Five, two. Number nine, consider agreement with Chainberks Engineering for Erosion Control Management for Roosevelt Ingram Park. In one of our budget work sessions, Mark Donham advised you, we would have to have this erosion plan in place if the guard is going to do the grading on the park for us. This is a requirement by Deaner to have in place.
Move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge to approve the agreement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 10, Ordinance 1823 to amend the fiscal year 1718 budget.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number 11, Ordinance 1824 to establish a project budget for the Ingram Park site work.
Move approval, Ordinance 1824.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Item number 11, Ordinance 1824 to establish a project budget for gravity leach aid lines at the landfill.
Move approval of Ordinance 1825.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion?
And this is basically trying, we've got, when we were having our budget meetings the other day, we realized that we needed to use some of last year, some of this and, or this year, next year. Right.
That's correct.
That's right. As, as was that last one.
That last one, yes. Both of them are moving some unspent.
Money.
From current year to project budget, coupled with money budgeted next year to complete those two projects.
Very good.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 13, call for a public hearing on conditional use permit 1801. Mr. Robinson, come up and explain, please.
This is a, basically a renewal for the previously approved CUP for the adult gaming establishment located on Highway 52. The applicant is David Chan.
If we, if we do move forward at the next public hearing, can we extend that, you know, so that he don't have to keep coming every six months?
That would be staff's recommendation that you extend it to a year or something like that at least, so that it's not so frequent.
And we will have, I heard, I understand there's a couple of issues we also need discussed with him. We will have that information here at the next meeting.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Should, should have some stuff in your packet right now, but you know, probably better to discuss it at that time. Yeah.
Counsel, be appropriate, we set a public hearing for Monday, June 11th at 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number 14, consider resolution to adopt the street assessment fees for fiscal year 2018-19. The information is in your packet. Each year we are required to adopt an assessment fee schedule based on the approximate cost of materials and you see what staff is recommending the cost of materials would be per foot.
Just for the public, has anybody got both of them open that you can look and give an, give a comparison?
Mr. Hoseh, come on up and talk about comparison for the two.
I think folks need to hear that, cause just today I've had folks say to me, why can't my road be paved? Why can't it, you know?
You will talk to us about each one last year compared to this year.
I don't have a copy in front of me.
What your rates will be.
Uh, basically all it is is just that there's cost comparisons from last year to this year. For the most part, fuel prices have gone up a little bit from last year to this year. So the price of asphalt obviously is a little higher and concrete as well. And so that's, that's the main, the main source of the.
I will go through the current ones that are proposed in Resolution 1805. Thirty-two width curb and gutter, stone and asphalt, 2951 per foot, per side. Twenty-six foot of width valley curb and gutter and stone and asphalt, 2548 per foot, per side. A 20 width pavement, 1417 per foot, per side. All of those, we're taking a non-paved street and paving. Next is for paved streets, adding 32 width curb and gutter, 2671 each, per foot, and 26 foot width curb and gutter with extra stone and asphalt if we pave it, 23 foot. curb and gutter and stone and asphalt, 25.48 per foot, per side. A 20 width pavement, 14.17 per foot, per side. All of those were taking a non-paved street and paving. Next is for paved streets. Adding 32 width curb and gutter, 26.71 each, per foot. And 26 foot width curb and gutter with extra stone and asphalt if we pave it, 23 foot, $23.21 per foot. A sidewalk five foot wide and four inches deep would be $14.03 per linear foot.
It's gone up about 10 percent, because as you were reading off 18, I was looking at 17. There's a comparison.
Yes, the, the copy you have in there was from last year's.
Right. We have 17 and 18 here and as you were reading 18, though, I was looking at 17. So it is.
Mr. Ferris?
Just to clarify a little further, we have a local bill that was adopted several years ago that's part of our charter that says that we do street improvements from a non-paved to a paved and also the installation of curb and gutter, no matter what type, based on an assessment basis, meaning the property owners are asking for the improvement, so we charge these assessments. There's a, there's a lengthy petition process. It's very lengthy, very legal, very complicated, but we used to do them fairly regularly. But that's how we move from a paved, an unpaved road to paved road or a paved road to install curb and gutter. The, the statute that allows us to do this also specifies that we base it on the actual cost of materials. And the reason that there's no labor or other things in there like that is because it's assumed that your taxes pay for the cost of the labor already. So if you live on a gravel road, we will maintain it any gravel condition. What you pay for is the extra you're asking for. So that's a little bit more of the background. Since Mr. Holshauser's been with the city, we haven't done an assessment, so probably had a little bit more disadvantage on the history in getting at Councilmember Hall's questions about why that is. Counsel can always abandon this and just make some sort of plan and choose to move forward every year and pave certain unpaved roads and finish them off. But now you've got several people over the years that have paid an assessment to have theirs paid. So, you know, bring up the question about, you know, I had to pay for mine and, yeah, some people have had curb and gutter installed on there. So, that's right. So that's a little bit of the history that, that Ross would not be privy to.
Do we ever deviate from the minimum four inch depth on the sidewalk or do anybody ever make any requests?
The only time we deviate from a depth in a sidewalk is if there's a driveway apron within the sidewalk. Driveways are typically six inches thick, but no, it's generally four inch concrete sidewalk.
Further questions? I'll entertain a motion that we approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, consider bids for the water treatment chemicals for the Public Utilities Department.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Those contracts will go to Chemtrade Chemicals, US LLC and J.C. Jones Chemicals Incorporated. Number 16, consider approval of a special events permit for the Moonlight Half Marathon and 5K. This has been going on for many years. I don't see Mr. Ashudo here. And I don't know that Lisa, you want to say anything or not. If not, it's, same thing they've done, same thing every year around the Baden Road Drive-In.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion?
Was, I've got it open now. Is there, I've got the permit fees. He did not ask for it to be waived, so.
No, they typically, they typically pay for theirs.
That's right. Okay, that's right.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, consider attendance for the Stanley County cog meeting. That is on May the 31st at New London. All right, looks like Hughes.
I'll let you know.
Okay. Me, Martha Sue, Hall, and Bramlett.
6:30.
6:30. Counsel, we've got a rather long closed session tonight, but I'll quickly come around the table. Mr. Ferris?
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend?
I'll commence.
Ms. Hughes?
Uh, just a couple of things. I appreciate everybody getting out and vote in our May 8th primary. I think that was very important for our city. I'd also like to thank the Parks and Rec Department and the Albemarle Downtown Development for the beach blast. I know a lot of work and effort went into that. I thought the bands were really good. I thought they played a good variety of music. It was very warm, but I think considering we haven't had one in a long time, I think it went very well. It's really interesting to drink a cold beverage in downtown and it be legal. So I look forward to next year's and again, thank you for all the effort, because I know it took a lot of time and planning. So appreciate it.
Mr. Aldridge?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall?
I would echo those comments about beach blast and just hope that next year we do it, that we start it later in the day when it's a lot cooler. I hate to put chief, fire chief on, but will you come up here a moment? Thank you, Sean. So y'all may or may not know that we've had a, that we had a fire over the weekend at Central at the apartment. Was it over the weekend, like Friday night?
Uh, it was either Friday night or Saturday night. It was a kitchen fire that the sprinkler system controlled. I didn't look and see what the damage estimates were, but I know that they did have to get one person out of the apartment. They were still in there when the fire department got there. So I know they had some water damage in the adjacent apartment because that person called 911 because they had water coming in their apartment from the sprinkler system. So, but the sprinkler system did its job and kept the damage to a, to a minimum, which is a very thankful thing. So.
So I mean, you may get calls about it. I got calls about it saying that, and y'all were there for a long time, which was a good thing to make sure things were good, but and to that end, thank you very much. But to that end, we still have, and we can't control this. I'm hearing folks say, there's still a lot of folks that come out, a lot of foot traffic around that, around the facility. And again, we can't control that because it is a, we don't own that. But coming out, they don't allow smoking inside, of course, but they come out to smoke on the sidewalks. But there's just a, just a lot going on there. And I keep getting phone calls about it. And the last thing, and Michael, I should have asked you this beforehand, have we heard from DOT on the speed on North First Street? Have we heard an answer from them?
I have not received a response.
Okay.
To my letter to NC DOT about that issue. I did submit it within a day or two of the council meeting and was told it might be a little while.
Okay.
So I don't know how long a little while is, but I can, I'll follow back up.
Thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Dry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Whitley?
May 30th, Central School, is that still?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
It will. Thank, thank you. In fact, we're going to adjourn later for another meeting on May 30th. As a reminder, May 30th, 5:00 PM, we will have a open house Central School auditorium. If you would like to come by and drop by, I encourage you to do so, to see what we have in the auditorium, see the equipment that the city has put in, and encourage you to consider leasing the auditorium for events.
I think the event is at 5:30.
At 5:30?
Yeah.
5:30. Okay.
And we'll make sure that goes on our website and Facebook and all that.
Wednesday, May 30th at 5:30. Shannon, will you give us a little publication there?
There you go.
And Dave Andrew too, with the radio.
Ah, Dave's hiding back there, Dave.
And Lisa.
Good to have you here, Dave. I didn't even see you hiding back there.
You have, as I understand it, you've got some things really lined up for that open house. I mean, I've been seeing talent companies doing something. So, I mean, I've seen on their Facebook page that they're getting prepared to make a presentation that night. So it's going to be big time, as I understand it. So thank you very much.
Further, Mr. Whitley?
I was, I just wanted.
Mr. Bramlett? Anyone in the audience have anything to come before counsel?
Oh, no.
We're broke.
Kylie wants us to sing.
Exactly. This coming Thursday is a fundraiser for the Butterfly House. It's a karaoke night at Five Points Public House. So come and support the Butterfly House and sing. Thank you. 7 o'clock.
I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session, pursue it to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, A, 3, 4, and 6, for illegal, for the City of Albemarle versus Chucky Nance Heart of Albemarle, economic development, and personnel.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go back into regular session.
So moved.
Coming out of closed session, we have a few motions to make here. Number one, I'll entertain a motion that we set a public hearing for June the 11th for an economic development request.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Bramlett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
June the 11th, or maybe it's 6. Or are we not guys?
I'll entertain.
In that 6?
5:30.
6 o'clock. In that June, the 11th, won't that be 6?
Yes, 6 o'clock, yes. I'll entertain a motion that we enter into an agreement to settle a legal issue with Jennifer Chandler in the amount of $32,500 plus mediation cost.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes. Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Anything else to come before counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if this is intended for me, but I have a card. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
Look at the front without making it, so we don't give it a secret away. And sign it and pass it around, please.
Thank you for telling me.
Thank you.
That was my job.
Yeah, we probably need to add that to that motion.
Will you amend your motion to include Ann Matt Chandler?
Include, yes.
Second then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We just, we just added the husband's name.
We added the husband.
Anything else? Chris is coming around with something you need to sign, so please don't take off. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Wednesday, June the 11th. No, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Wednesday, May the 30th at 7:00 PM.
Same.
With the ribbon cutting at 5:30.
Yeah, we got the. We have the ribbon cutting at Central Auditorium at 5:30. Our regular meeting will be at.
Seven.
Our meeting will be at 7 o'clock, May the 30th. Motion by Councilmember Hall?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Stay here.